Welcome to our reorganization meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is with great sadness tonight, unfortunately, that we're starting out our school year to inform our community about the death of one of our students, Molly Hendershot. Molly was a rising 12th grader at Menon High School and passed away late yesterday afternoon as the result of a medical emergency. This is certainly a difficult time for our community as we grieve the loss of this beautiful, beautiful young lady. She's probably one of the kindest souls I've ever met in my life. So I ask that you please send your thoughts and prayers to Molly's family. And I also ask that you please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our, as always, we have a trauma, illness, and grief team that always works to provide our support, support for our staff and our students and families. The support is available to our students and your children if needed. We've sent a separate email to all Menon High School families. We've communicated internally throughout the course of the day today. And we've sent a more global email out just about an hour ago. So those that we know are close to Molly and those that are at Menon High School have received a separate email as far as supports that are available for them on Friday. Also know that we have resources about dealing with grief available on our district website. That also was included to our email for all staff and families. Please do not hesitate to reach out to your child's school principal or counselor if you feel that any additional support is needed. Thank you. At this point, we're going to go through several oath of offices that will be given by our district clerk. And I have the privilege as superintendent to be the first to receive the oath of office by Mrs. Deborah Carpenter. Oh, I'm sorry. I have the privilege of giving the oath of office to Mrs. Deborah Carpenter.
Can you please raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of school district clerk
the duties of school district clerk
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
congratulations.
Now that you're sworn in, you will give the oath of office to our newly elected school board members. We're going to start with Emily Kay. You're going to come right over here.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of a board of education member
the duties of a board of education member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And next, we are going to give the oath of office to newly elected board member Dave Burke. Rachel, do you want to come up as a former Pittsburgh grad? Are you good with your seat back there? Okay.
Good. How are you doing?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of a board of education member
the duties of a board of education member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the reorganization agenda? Can I get it? Was it them both? Any discussion questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the election of our board president. Can I ask for a motion for board president?
I would like, so moved.
I was worried.
So moved.
For a little bit.
Sorry. Had to turn on the microphone. Right now, I'd like to take this moment and nominate our peer Ted Resty for board president. During his tenure on the board, he has exhibited leadership skills as both a board member and as our vice president. Over the past eight years, Ted has built a wide breadth of knowledge by taking part on several board committees such as leadership, communications, audit oversight, as well as participating in committees within the Monroe County School Boards Association. Ted leads by example. His decisions are thoughtful and they are carefully considered. Along with his experience, Ted's passion and dedication for our community and education makes him an ideal candidate for this position.
Thank you, Renee. Any other discussions or questions or comments? Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask for a vote of approval. All in favor? Shh. Oh, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, at this, any questions, discussion? At this point, I'd like to ask for all in favor? Opposed? So it is unanimous, six to zero vote. Congratulations, Ted. At this point, it's now my last time of the school year to ever be in control of a board meeting. So I'd like to provide the opportunity now for President Ted Resty to have the oath of office by Deb Carpenter.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the board of education president
the duties of the board of education president
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Ted.
Thanks, Mike.
The meeting is now run by the president from this point forward.
Okay, it's now my honor to ask for nominations for vice president of the board of education.
Got one here. I am honored to nominate Robin Scott as our board of education vice president. Having worked with Robin for several years, I can attest to the drive and passion that Robin leads with. She is student-centered, open-minded, and focused on continuing on the path forward of excellence in education in Pittsburgh. Robin is committed to all aspects of public education as shown through her service on various committees throughout our district and with Monroe County school boards. I am confident that Robin and Ted together will lead our board to accomplish the goals that we set forth and position us to carry on the legacy of academic success.
Thank you. Any, a second?
Please, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the board of education vice president
the duties of the board of education vice president
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, moving along with the reorganization meeting, I'd like to do our appointments next, and I'd like to
I should probably do an oath of office for me.
Oh, we weren't going to do that this year. Next, we're going to do an oath of office for the superintendent.
It's optional.
So Deb, if you would?
Yes. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of superintendent of schools
duties of superintendent of schools
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ted.
All right.
We're off to a rocky start.
So now we'll move on to our appointments. And before we do that, I just want to note that most of our board of education meeting dates have been moved so that they will not conflict with town board meeting dates for the 2022-2023 school year. And with that, I'd like to get a motion for the approval of our appointments for the school year.
Second.
Thank you. Did you get those? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, if I could get a motion on the designations for the 2022-2023 school year as listed. Thank you, Robin.
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion? No, we're good there. Any opposed? Motion carried.
We just need to vote for all in favor.
Yeah, we'll do the all in favor. Perfect.
Okay, all in favor.
All in favor. We got all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Perfect. All right. Next, we're going to go for the authorizations as listed for the 2022-2023 school year. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. We got that one. All right. Next, we're going to do the board committee appointments with a couple new board members this year. We got together and talked over the different committees, and I'll go through the assignments for this year. For the Monroe County School Boards Association committees, for the executive committee, myself is board president and Mike Puro is superintendent. For the legislative committee, Sarah Paluzio will be serving that as along. She will also be the co-chair of that committee. So we thank you for that, Sarah. On the labor relations committee, Emily Kay will be serving as the primary and Dave Burke will be the alternate on that. And for the information exchange, Dave Burke will be the primary and Emily Kay will be the alternate. On board leadership, I will be serving as the board president and my alternate would be Robin as vice president. And for the steering committee, because Sarah is a co-chair of one of the Monroe County school boards committees, she will be serving on that. So again, thank you, Sarah. For district committees, our legislative liaison will be Sarah. The teacher center policy board will be Emily Kay. Thank you, Emily. For town, village, and school meeting group will be myself as president, Robin as vice president, and the superintendent, Mike Puro. For our audit oversight, will be chaired by Renee. Thank you. And Robin Scott and Jeff Casey will also serve on that committee. Our district advocacy committee will be the superintendent, Mike, myself, and Sarah. The board every year conducts a self-evaluation at the end of the year and determines areas that we want to work on as improvement. And this year, we chose a couple committees that we will be continuing. And the first is our community engagement, which will be chaired by Renee, and serving on that also will be Robin and Emily. And our board insight article and communication committee will be chaired by Jeff. Thank you. And Sarah Paluzio and Dave Burke. Those wrap up our board committees for 2022-2023. That is the end of the reorganization meeting portion, and we're going to segue right into the regular point of, part of the meeting. Those that came
Yeah, if we, we just wanted to take a couple photos.
Okay, I guess we're going to do a couple photos. And while we're doing that, if anybody that came for the reorganization part of the meeting wishes to exit gracefully, you're more than welcome to. We welcome you to stay for the whole meeting, but you certainly don't have to feel obligated. Okay, moving on to regular part of the meeting, can I get an approval of the agenda, please? Thank you, Robin. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes from June 22nd?
Submove.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Any changes? All in favor? Any opposed? Now, we have to have Dave and Emily abstain on that vote because they weren't here officially. They were here, but they weren't, they were on the board. Perfect. So motion carried with those that can vote. Perfect. Board of Education report, we don't have any dates at this point for any of the Monroe County school boards, but those will be coming out probably end of the summer. We'll start populating those. Dates to remember, we had the first day of our summer workshop, which I think went extremely well. Had a lot of valuable information. We had a great attendance from a lot of different stakeholders. I'm sure Mike will talk a little bit more about that in your report. Additional dates to remember, tomorrow, second day of the workshop. Hopefully, everybody will be there. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be August 9th, again at 5:00. Remember, during the summer, we start our meetings at 5:00. At this time, we are going to do a couple things. First, we're going to go through our governing mission. And what we like to do is actually read that out loud is for the people here, for the people out in the audience virtually, but also I think it's good for the board to hear it because we live it every day. So we're going to go around the table and read this. I'll begin. The Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education serves the students and families in our community by
partnering with superintendent, setting strong, clear direction and policy for leading the district's strategic and operational planning.
monitoring and evaluating the district's educational, administrative, and financial performance against clearly defined standards and objectives.
ensuring that the district possesses the necessary human, financial, and other resources.
creating opportunities for collaboration amongst established community partners to contribute to the district's effectiveness.
valuing and promoting positive and productive relationships within the district and across the broader community.
protecting the privacy and confidentiality in matters involving students, personnel, legal, and contractual matters.
valuing and promoting a positive and productive working partnership between the BOE board leadership and the superintendent.
understanding the difference between the board of education's governance role and the superintendent's operational role and embracing the value of both.
providing professional development for and engaging board members in the governance process and developing the general skills of all board members, including, but not limited to, skills related to communication, business, and finance, advocacy, et cetera.
promoting active participation and engaged teamwork amongst all board members.
annually conducting board self-assessments and goal-setting while actively advocating in areas that are in the best interest of the district.
practicing the highest level of integrity and ethics.
At the conclusion of the meeting, all of the board members will sign the document that includes all of those values. And next, we're going to go through our communications statement. The Pittsburgh Board of Education Communications Agreement, the PCSD board of education members agree that
we will act and make decisions not as a collection of separate individuals, but as a unit comprised of its members.
we will assist one another and our constituents as they navigate the protocols and processes for communication with the district administrators and staff.
issues and concerns raised by constituents shall be timely shared with the board leadership and superintendent and with individual board members as appropriate.
we recognize that others see us as always wearing the board hat.
conversation for the purpose of influencing others or sharing opinions on matters before the board, with the exception of public board meetings, is prohibited.
we will be respectful listeners, modeling the civility we expect from others during board meetings, at school-related functions, and out in the community.
we will communicate at board meetings functions by respectfully sharing ideas and perspectives.
the board of education president is the spokesperson for the board. However, all board members will be accessible to listen to community members' feedback.
Thank you. Again, this is another document that all the board members will sign at the end of the, at the meeting. So appreciate taking the time to read that. Moving on next to oh, we're going to adopt that. So after having read that, if I could get a motion to approve that from the board?
Submove.
Thank you, Sarah.
Second.
Thank you, Robin. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. That concludes that. We'll move on to Mr. Kenny and the financial report.
The only item is a transportation contract from Monroe One BOSI to transport a student with special needs to the extended school year summer program.
Can I get a motion on that, please?
Submove.
Thank you, Renee.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Human resource report, Mr. Clark.
Good evening. First, for your consideration, we have the professional staff report. We have one district administrative appointment for assistant superintendent for business. We have four certificated staff appointments, three certificated staff part-time to probationary appointments, two certificated staff full-time to part-time appointments, and three school-related professional appointments.
Can I get a motion on that, please? Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Renee. Any questions or comments, concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, for your consideration is the support staff report. We have one clerical substitute trainer per diem appointment, one school aid resignation, one transportation appointment, two custodial summer helper appointments, one maintenance retirement with 12.4 years of service to the district, and one food service resignation.
Can I get a motion on that report, please? Thank you, Sarah.
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And finally, for your consideration is the per diem and substitute special salaries for this school year.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Renee. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to special education report, Ms. Woods. She's not here.
The special education report is on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Pell.
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. On the consent agenda is policy 5672, information security breach notification. I do want to touch base a little bit on our two-day workshop that started today. Want to thank everyone for your involvement. It's a, it's a long day. Often, the topics can be emotional. Today was certainly an emotional topic. All of you were there at 8:00 a.m. this morning and left shortly before our board meeting. It's, it's a unique district that we have where we're able to bring together stakeholders from all different areas. So we had, I think, 95 people meet today. In the past, we've had anywhere between 75 and 85 or a little bit more. It was a full house today. In the past, we've done things in our two-day workshop that involve board of education members, involve all administrators, teacher leaders, committee members, parents, PTSA members, clerical staff. Basically, all, all units are represented in our summer workshops. We've, we've solidified in the past, we've created and solidified our mission, vision, values work with the challenge of how we bring them to life and not just something that's on paper. And you all have seen the fruits of that work. We've met together over the summer, unfortunately, to discuss how we were going to handle COVID. And again, that yielded without a pre-conceived outcome, our elementary students coming to school virtually full-time, major shifts in how we delivered education to our students at the elementary level. It allowed for our secondary to meet three times a week in a hybrid model. We've met last year to come together to work on inequity policy, inequity goals, and how we bring that to life, which we focused on this year and will continue into next year. And today and tomorrow, we focus on how best to assess student and adult risk behaviors in light of all of the shootings that we've seen. We've, we scheduled this back in December, so we had no foresight of what this year was going to bring. And unlike years prior where we had many committees come to the table, this year, what we did was have every single building and district comprise teams. And all of those teams and individuals showed up today for a total of 90-something participants to be trained on how best to identify risks in students and adults and staff, and then what do you do with that? And so today was really another layer in our preventative piece for school safety. I do want to read you the bio of the person that helped facilitate today. His name is Mark Concordia. He's a training manager for At Risk and a certified threat manager through the Association of Threat Professionals. Mr. Concordia holds over 20 years of experience in law enforcement with a more than 15-year specialty in targeted violence investigations. He is recognized counterterrorism expert, having 13 years with the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force. Before joining At Risk, he worked as an associate professor, a certified FBI instructor, and New York State Department of Criminal Justice Service instructor. He's credited with building, training, and managing behavioral threat assessment and management protocols for higher education, K-12 districts, community-wide threat advisory teams, and threat response units within police departments. I could go on and list all of his publications and contributions in writing. There's many. He received his graduate degree in international studies from St. John Fisher and currently operates as the threat assessment and management expert for the New York State Department of Education. In addition, he represents At Risk as one of the cadres of K-12 experts for the National Center for School Safety. Through the design and instruction of training programs, Mr. Concordia is committed to fostering safety through strategies that promote cultural competence and lessen biases through strategies that promote cultural competence and lessen biases within an organization. So today, we spent our time better learning what violence prevention can look like in our schools. And it's, my, my takeaway, more than anything, is how much we're already doing as far as creating an environment where all students feel welcome, supported, having a trusted adult. And unfortunately, as in any organization, that's not enough. We need to continue to, to do more. And so today, we looked more at case studies in theory. Tomorrow, we'll be taking that information and processing it through our building-level teams and to somewhat look at our own case studies within Pittsburgh and try to calibrate how we would make decisions to see where we stand as far as a nine-building decision and where we may need to do more training. So this will be ongoing. This is something new where we do have threat assessment teams at all nine of our buildings. We also have a district-level threat assessment team. Our goal, again, like anything else, is to provide another layer of support. You'll also hear us continue to talk about additional layers of support as we look at capital project coming up that we'll be posing to the community shortly around our physical plant. So not only will be, we be doing a threat analysis tomorrow, our assessment, but we'll be looking at our physical plant and seeing, building by building, what additional layers are needed to, to, to help make us less of a softer target but maintain a feeling of, of comfort and welcome in our, in our schools. So with that, I want to thank the 95 people because last year was a tough, tough school year. It was draining on, on many levels, and everyone showed up. Everyone showed up today. They, they worked hard, and it was an emotional topic. So thank you to people that are here, and, and thank you to the other 80-something staff members that attended today, and look forward to making progress tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Robin. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried, thank you. Any old business to bring before the board? Any new business? I don't think we had any write-ins for public comment. I don't see any cards, so I think we're good there. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Sigh.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? That means there's none opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.